Okay, everybody. We're down two. We're down two. We had two people that had a couple of conflicts. So I will now call back to order the regular meeting of the Lake Forest Community High School Board of Education meeting for May 9th, 2016. May I have a roll call vote, please? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Mormon?
Here.
Mrs. Carlyle?
Here.
Mr. Lane?
Here.
Dr. Elliott?
Here.
Ms. Davis? Mr. Powers? Mr. Marcusson?
Real quick, we've got a lot...
Lots to cover. We're almost at the end of the school year. This is Jill's last meeting, I think, unless you want to come after you graduate, which I don't think you will. So you realize how fast senior year goes when you measure it in terms of board meetings. There have only been nine or 10. So Jill, good luck. I hope Lake Forest High School has prepared you for what comes next. Which is a good segue. Spring is when the admin and the board take stock. We look at how we did, what we can do better, what's our focus, and are we prepared for what's next? The good news, the simple answer is yes. I believe we are. We have a strong staff of committed teachers and administrators, rock-solid tax and financial base, but we could always do more and we could always do better. So there will be more on this in the coming months as we start to take stock and look ahead. So, Mr. Simick?
Thank you, Ms. Marcusson. I'd like to hand off to Dr. Holland.
And I'm gonna pass it over to Jill to give the student report.
All right. Hi, everyone. Sorry, I've been a little absent lately. I had lots of activities going on and Jake is again sorry, he can't be here tonight because it's senior night for baseball. Okay, so we're just gonna start off with what we did last week as a student council. We brought in 1,500 pounds of food for the Cool Food Pantry in Waukegan. And we, this is our second drive that we've done with them. They actually called Mrs. Harmson like three or four times because they were in such desperate need. And we were their biggest donor to date because we brought in, again, 1,500 pounds of food for them. So that was a big accomplishment for us. And this Thursday is actually our final meeting for student council and we're gonna be just celebrating the seniors and all the stuff that they've done over the past four years. And I'm also here to give an update on the Emotional Wellness Walk. Mr. Maher is here also. And it's May 17th. It goes by the name, "The Enjoy the Journey Walk." It's basically just a day that we kind of all try to get together with the school and just promote, you know, emotional wellness, staying stress-free and stuff like that. It's an all-school walk. Again, we get out during our third period and we walk like a mile and a half around the school and then come back to the front lawn for just a day full of activities. DJ J West, Jordan Wessel, senior at our school, is gonna be DJing on the front lawn. And we're actually doing something different this year that I am super excited about. We're having food trucks come parked in front of the school and we are gonna be like chowing down. So we have cheesies coming, a barbecue truck that benefits Iraq War vets, and a couple like ice cream and gelato options as well. And in part of doing the Emotional Wellness Walk, we're gonna be pairing with the Boys and Girls Club and doing a drive for sports equipment this summer. So we're promoting, bringing in like used soccer balls, baseballs, basketballs, stuff like that for them to take this summer. So that's coming up on the 17th. And other than that, we're just kind of winding down for student council. We're gonna be passing the torch over to the new exec members this week because the cabinet just had their election. So I think there's about like 20, 25 kids on each cabinet and the exec positions will be voted for this Friday. So next meeting, you'll be being introduced to the new president and vice president. And that kind of brings me to the end. So Jake obviously couldn't be here tonight, so he asked me to read a little something to you guys. And it goes, "Unfortunately, I'm unable to attend the meeting tonight because I have a baseball game. I just want to say thank you so much to each board member, Mr. Simick and Dr. Holland. You guys give up so much of your time to make Lake Forest High School great and it has been an honor to give a student's report each month. I've enhanced my public speaking skills, practiced acting professionally, and made great connections working with each and every one of you. I wish everyone the best and cannot wait to see what the future holds for Lake Forest High School. Your president, Jake Durberg." And on behalf of Jake, myself, and student council, we just wanna, again, thank you all for the work that you guys have been doing. We've had such a great year, especially with Dr. Holland being new and everything and just like having a smooth transition. And we've really appreciated all of the support that we've gotten from the board. And yeah, so I, Mrs. Ragnow decided that I was gonna pick up lots of things from sweets today after school. So I have a bag of goodies for you guys over here, complete with a vegan option for Dr. Holland, of course. And so when you're ready, you can just come over and grab anything at the end. But other than that, thank you so much. I really appreciate it.
Thanks. So congratulations to you and Jake. And on behalf of all of us, we want to thank you for your leadership and support. You have been a sounding board for all of us, as well as a great representation of the student body voice. And thanks for challenging us, encouraging us, and also supporting us in helping to create a welcoming, supportive, and awesome environment for our students. Really appreciate it. I was telling Jill, I'm probably gonna bawl the entire graduation. But thank you. Connected to some of what Jill mentioned is that the end of April, we had an awesome alumni event. I felt like I was a kid in a candy shop leaning forward and listening to all of the outstanding achievements and accomplishments that our alumni came to share with our senior class. It was an amazing day. We had a great event in the public room. Our students gave tours to our alumni. It was a great day of sharing. And I think it was really a great opportunity for students to see what's possible. We had alumni with a variety of different experiences as students in the high school. And for them to be able to share what their experiences were like, crack jokes a lot on some of those experiences, but through the ups and downs of their experiences, it's great to see where they currently are right now. And it was very inspirational. So I'd like to thank everyone that took part in creating that experience for our students, as well as our faculty and staff. Tomorrow, we have our second New School Day update meeting. It's in Seminar B at 6:00 PM. Want to encourage everyone to come out. Everyone should have received information about where we've landed with some of our decisions. If you're interested in hearing that further unpacked and clarified and really getting a sense of the New School Day from the student perspective, as well as how we plan to evaluate the changes, as well as some of our supports that we have in store for our students, please feel free to come out and engage with us. We have a TEDx event coming up, May 16th. We have our Wellness Walk. And a lot of time and attention right now is also going into planning for prom and graduation. And so it's a busy time in the building. I think seniors are excited to finish, as well as scared out of their mind about moving forward, but looking forward to wrapping things up and getting all of our changes underway for next year. Thank you.
Thank you. And I can tell you that Jill is not scared. Jill is in control of the world because I have seen her both as a cheerleader and also as apparently a captain of the badminton team. Is that right? And you want to talk about a pied piper? There are hundreds of girls out there with badminton rackets and Jill goes out there and starts to bark things and they all just circle up and start doing their exercises. They just follow her like nobody's business. So Jill, I'm really going to miss working with you. I got to know you during the principal search. Remember that? That was just about a year ago today. And you are truly one of our inspirational leaders as kids. You are a terrific ambassador for the building and for our community. So thank you. And I know you're gonna go control the world. We know that.
Oskiwawa.
Yeah.
Oskiwawa. ILL?
What was that?
Illinois.
Is there some signal?
Oskiwawa. ILL, INI, etc., cheer. I don't even know what oskiwawa means, but it's...
Chief of Defense.
Chief of Defense.
Okay.
Can't say it, yeah.
Okay. Yeah. It probably gets us all in trouble. So this is a remarkably busy time of year with a combination of end-of-year meetings and planning for next year. We would like to extend our appreciation to Carol Brown, the class of 1971, Anne Noble, the class of 1989, and John Vignati, the class of 1998. They are now members of our Lake Forest Wall of Fame. Carol was a groundbreaking rower and three-time Olympian, Anne, an noted playwright who teaches Shakespeare to incarcerated youth, and John, a vice president for Disney who created special presentations for our students to see the cool work that can come from living in the basement of your parents' house as a high school student for four years. Each of them shared reflections from their time at the high school. Special thanks to Joy Murawski for heading up that special event. It is without any question one of the most interesting, the most surprising, and the most heartwarming of all of our events of the entire year. The Lake Forest High School APT also held its final meeting and we'd like to thank Missy Berger and her army of more-than-able volunteers for their work this year in executing activities ranging from puppy cuddling to prom. Our high school had such a great year in no small measure because of them. Hello Dolly just completed a three-day run with accolades as glowing as any that I have ever heard about any high school musical ever. Special thank you to Sherry and Jim Pasolino for what may be and what we hope is not their last contribution to our theater and music programs. They have contributed all kinds of time and energy throughout the course of their three children's time in our high school. In the weeks ahead, we have band and choral and orchestra concerts, as well as an honors night and TEDx. And each of these highlights different areas of student interest and talent. This is a real showcase coming up over the course of the next couple of weeks. And the final portion of the superintendent's report, I would like to hand off to Mr. Albus to bring us up to speed on some end-of-year projections on how we're looking budgetarily. Not nearly as exciting as other portions of the superintendent report, we might add.
Over the weekend, Jen and I had a conversation and I think it, I'm gonna paraphrase it so hopefully I'll get it fairly accurate, but it was, "Last year when the budget was presented, we were surprised pleasantly, but we were surprised at how well last year's budget ended." And it's not good to have surprises either way. So rather than waiting until we do the budget, can you kind of give us an indication of the kind of, the year we're having? And we talked about that and I had said that we're having a good year. And that led into a discussion about, well, how do you know? I mean, what level of detail do you go into? So I have a couple of objectives in this discussion tonight. One is to, one, communicate to you the type of year we project that we're gonna end with. And to give you some idea of the level of detail that we do utilize in developing these assessments so that you have confidence that we have a good handle on this. This will look somewhat familiar to Mr. Lane or Mr. Mormon because of being on the finance committee, at least annually, if not more, will look at this format. At your place tonight is a packet. Sort of looks like this. We're not going through every page. I'm just gonna give a sampling and then summarize where we're at. What I have up on the screen at the moment actually is page four of the document. You'll see in the middle of the page, there's a variance over here for total salaries of In this assessment here, being positive means we're gonna be under budget by 229,000 is what we're projecting. But the three pages preceding that, as you look at it, you're gonna see different notations: administrative, teacher, clerical, food service, security. And by the way, this is a working document. This is not developed for public presentation, so it's not really a polished document. So please don't judge it from that regard. But it means a lot to us internally. So we break down every employee group, whether people are paid by 10 months, 12 months. We look at the substitute costs. We look at extra duty stipends, what's been paid to date, and where are we in the remaining year. And make that assessment by every object and every fund. So the first one, as you see on salaries, is at 229,368. As you keep going down that sheet, you're gonna see a line here where it says pension cost shift and you're gonna see zero. When we adopted the budget, we had built in last spring an assumption that the legislature was going to enact a pension cost shift to schools and that was gonna cost us about $101,000. That hasn't happened. It's not gonna happen for the remainder of this fiscal year. Trick is, do we put it in next year or not? Right now, I'm not putting it in, but I'm leaving it in future years. Because I do think eventually that's still going to happen. But if you went then through the benefits, you'll see TRS, which stands for the Teachers' Retirement System, a budget of $520,266. And we project that we're gonna spend 419, in part because we came in under on our salaries. You can go through the other benefits, the health insurance, the dental, the long-term. So if you turn to page five, you'll see a variance favorably of $131,000. And again, remember, $101,000 of that was the assumption that a pension cost shift would be enacted and that didn't occur. Okay? And I won't walk through unless you really want me to, but all the other objects. So the purchase services, the supplies, the capital outlay, we do that for the fund. Then we go to the operations and maintenance fund, go through the same exercise. Bond and interest is pretty clean because that's pretty set. Do that in transportation and IMRF. Then we come back on the revenue side. And I won't go through all the revenues, but I would like to point out, if you had turned Sorry for the angle on that. The number near the bottom here, it's a positive variance of $173,649,000 of state revenues being paid to us. So a year ago, when we built the budget, we were coming off, just coming off our state conference for our school business officials. And there were people there from the State Board of Ed and their advice to us at the time for next year, meaning this year, budget one payment from last year and two for the coming fiscal year because of the dire position the state's in. So that's what we did. Through politics, I think one party trying to outmaneuver the other party, there's been more of a priority on paying schools this year. So we've actually received four payments. So the variance of the $173,000. So now I'm gonna ask you to turn to the very front page. So in our educational fund, we have a positive variance on revenue of $218,000, but $173,000 of that is what I just talked about on the state funds. So the other variance really isn't that significant. It's little things here and there. And you can go through on the revenue side and do that for all the operating funds and you'll see that we're anticipating close to $300,000 more in revenue than we had projected when we built the budget. If you look then on the expenditure side, we're significantly under on the educational expenses. The 229 that I showed in salaries, in the bulk of that really is two people, or a good chunk of that. And then the $100,000 on the TRS, the pension cost shift, and then our special ed tuition, which is always a roll of the dice. Then as you look at the other funds, the variances aren't quite as great, but we're positive on expenses of 824. So when we adopted the budget, we anticipated expenses exceeding revenues by almost $1 million. I think the exact amount was $986,613. But as we sit here today, we think that we're gonna be close to even or maybe slightly in the black for this fiscal year. Again, as we look forward, then we have to make some decisions about what we budget on state funds. We're always looking at special ed. If you were to spend time and if it makes sense, if you look at the different categories, you can see the individual line adjustments. And I don't really feel that we've missed anything big, that we just misbudgeted. You know, some of the things, again, they're rolls of the dice. But they're adding up to positive variances. Now, to the new board members, please don't get used to it. This is two years in a row, but it doesn't always happen. There are times too that things go against us and we don't get revenue or expenses come in higher. So we project to end the year very well right now. This projection, we spent, about three of us worked on this today for two or three hours and really did a lot of updating. This is even better than what I was using when we were analyzing the construction that we were looking at doing. So we're even in a little better position than we thought. So any questions?
Any questions, guys?
Did you say we budgeted, you expected a $980,000 deficit for what we, when we budgeted for this year? Why did we budget with such a big deficit?
Well, it's all those pieces. So if we anticipated that the state was only gonna give us three payments, that would've lowered our revenue expectations. If we anticipated the state was going to enact a pension cost shift, that increased our expense anticipations.
So most of that deficit was based on our expectations about the state?
I would, I would put it in four areas. I think we're almost flat because of, one, state payments, getting the extra one, which was about $173,000. The pension cost shift not occurring, which was $100,000. Salaries coming in about 229 below. And special ed, which I didn't really go into, but our special ed tuition's coming in low. And that, again, that one is the most wild card in all of our expenses. The other variances are just, as you go through the report, you'll see some accounts that are over and some that are under. And it just adds, those are just nominal ones that add up. But it's really in those four areas. Now, I do want to point out though, when you look, when the books close in June, it may look even better, but it's kind of an anomaly because we experienced this at District 67. As we went to more of an electronic registration and we opened that process up earlier, we'll collect more fees before June 30th than we have historically collected. So those numbers may show in here, but it's sort of an artificial, you know, blip that Any other questions?
End of your superintendent's report. Now's the time for public participation. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to address the board? Nobody? Okay. Reports. Emotional Wellness, CSCI. John?
How you doing? Again, my name is John Maher. I'm one of the deans at the high school. I'm also Department Chair of Student Services and kind of in charge of the emotional wellness program and that we do in the building. What I did is I have about five slides. You received a packet of a pretty large report, probably about 49 pages. That is actually the summary report from the 147-page big report that we get. Also, they did a PowerPoint comparison for us from 2015 to 2016. You also received that. So what I'm gonna do is I'm just gonna hit some highlights. If you have questions, please ask as I go along or at the end. So on January 27th, the student portion of the CSCI was administered. This was kind of all administered at one time through our Chromebooks. The one-on-one capabilities that we have have made surveying, there's been a couple glitches here and there, but it's made it a lot easier for us than having to reserve computer labs and trying to bring classes down. So that's really been a great thing for us as far as collecting data. On the, on January 25th through February 5th, the staff portion was made available. This was purely voluntary for our staff to take this survey. We encouraged them to do so. So our rate was, we surveyed about 68.78% of students and school personnel were 76.36%. Again, substantial returns. Our people over at the National School Climate Center in DC were very happy with what we got. Some strengths that kind of came back from us were physical surroundings, social support for adults and students, sense of physical security. Some areas of improvement were sense of social-emotional security and social and civic learning. These have been notoriously lower in 2015 and also now in 2016. What I wanted to kind of get across a little bit, and you'll see it the next couple graphs, is that a lot of neutral feedback, so not positive, not negative, neutral, really affects those numbers. And you'll be able to see in the, in the next graph. Also, we do not have any numbers in the negative range. So it's out of a five scale. 2.5 or below is negative. 2.5 to 3.5 is neutral. 3.5 and above to five is positive. So all of our numbers were in the neutral to positive range. New to this year's survey, they do different dimensions, like sense of social-emotional security, social and civic learning. The new one was social media. It was the first time that they added this to the survey. So both staff and students took that dimension part. Also, demographics, asked for the first time if you're LGBT. So that was the first time we were able to kind of track that small demographic, smaller compared to the larger size, and kind of see where they were at as far as how they responded. I will say that the LGBT did report a lower median rating in many areas, including essentially the physical security, sense of social-emotional security, support for learning, social and civic learning, and respect for diversity. So what we have as far as the alliance with John Waniger heading that is things that we need to continue to watch out for and keep working on, keep improving on. So as I was saying, these next two graphs, this first one is students. And this shows you on the left the different dimensions. And what I kind of wanted to point it out is that, say, for sense of social-emotional security, which is right there, we have 3.17, which actually went down from 3.22 last year. We have 14% negative, but we have 59% neutral. So the neutrals have expanded a lot, which also caused our full numbers to go down a little bit. The same with the first time we did social media. We have 8% negative, but 51% neutral. So it's, it's kind of, where we say we need improvement, yes. We would love all of our numbers to be in the positive range. But some of these numbers went down a little bit because the neutral areas expanded. This next slide is for school personnel. Again, the sense of social-emotional security in this area has expanded, while this area is still 8% the negative. Now, interestingly enough, the social media part is 70% neutral for school personnel, which made it 3.10. So with that being said, there's quite a differential, especially with social media, we found it to be very interesting, that students rated it at 3.5, which is the very top end of neutral, almost positive, and school personnel rated it at 3.10. So they, their neutral areas were much higher, the school personnel, than what students were. So is that perception? Are we, as school personnel, perceiving social media to be worse than it is? Or is it that students are just kind of used to some of the things that are on social media that we might find to be problematic and, and they don't? We also had 13... We also had thirteen additional leadership questions. These questions were developed through the, the help of a consulting firm, through Dr. Holland, me, a number of other people, through conversations, and then we went to staff, asked staff for their feedback, and came up with, with thirteen questions that we felt were pretty good, as far as trying to decipher a little bit whether we're in leadership we need to improve. Last year's leadership results were, were not good. This year, they have improved. So, what I did is, I took a snippet of it. In your packet, you should have gotten a Word document. They had all thirteen questions and, and all the different percentages. What I did is, I took the top three percentages as far as in the positive range, and the bottom three. The first one, I'm confident I know where to take a particular question or concerns about my work. Sixty-four percent agreed, of staff agreed. So, that was really good. I received useful guidance, guidance from my building-level instructional leader. Sixty-three percent strongly agree. Staff in our building have an effective forum to discuss important matters with building-level leaders. Forty-nine percent strongly agree. The next question actually had both a top-three positive rating and also a top-three negative rating. So, my building-level leaders provide effective communication about decisions that affect my job. Forty-nine percent agreed. Twenty-seven percent strongly disagreed or agreed. And then, these are the most disagreed-upon questions. Input staff gives is reflected in final decisions made by district-level leaders. Twenty-nine percent strongly disagreed. And also, district-level leaders consider the impact of decisions our workload placed on staff. Thirty-nine percent strongly disagreed. So, what we're going to do is, we're going to take some of this information, kind of go back. I've already talked with Dr. Holland about it. How can we address especially, obviously, some of the questions that were disagreed And lastly, just so that you have a better understanding, and Jill did a great job talking a little bit about the walk today, some of the emotional wellness program that is currently going on in the building in this past year. Link Crew, which is head by Maggie Harmson, stronger than ever. We had a hundred and eighty-nine kids apply to be Link Crew leaders. This is part of our Frosch orientation, when freshmen come in, juniors and seniors, and sophomores, too, they come, they work with the freshmen, they go into small groups. It, it's such a great day. So, we've gone from trying to maybe get sixty, seventy applicants when we first started this, to a hundred and eighty-nine for seventy-five positions, which is great. We have student support roundtables, which is ran by our social workers and student assistance program coordinators and psychologists. We have eight different social-emotional groups running right now. An example would be adoption group. We have a grief group. We have something called Crossroads, like kids who really don't like school. So, they come, they talk about how much they don't like school. So, we get them to go to more school doing that. So, those are some examples. We also have our Scout Day, Scout Out Day, which was on the ninth of February. We had dueling pianos, breakout sessions. We have Erica's Lighthouse, which is a great thing that we've done. Erica's Lighthouse is from Willmett. They came here, they have a set program. What we did is, we took their program, RTAs kind of made it into their own, and actually now Erica's Lighthouse likes so much what we're doing, they're kind of coming and observing what we're doing. So, that's been a great thing. Clothesline Project, Wellness for Life Mask Project, which is great. If you've been in the Commons, you see all these masks. They go all the way pretty much up to the, the ceiling of the Commons. Freshmen in the Wellness for Life class got to decorate masks, the outside demonstrated what they show other people, and the inside is how they feel about themselves. And really got into it. The masks are awesome. Again, go into the Commons, you can see them all on the wall. Ty Sales was a speaker we brought in for alcohol, tobacco, and drugs, his decision-making. One Life Live Well Week, that just happened. We had Forever Home Yoga. We have Detective come in and talk about cyber safety. We just completed the IYS on April twenty-seventh through the twenty-ninth through the math department. Thank you, Joe, Ricky, and all the math teachers. So, we had fourteen-hundred-and-nine surveys completed through this process. Again, the Illinois Youth Survey is mainly focused on drug and alcohol use, and kind of gives us some really good numbers as far as where we need to focus our attention. Jill talked about Enjoy the Journey Walk, which will be on the seventeenth, and yes, we're all excited about the food trucks. And then, just a little plug for our student support team, social workers, psychologists, and SAP people. We are seeing more kids than ever on a consistent basis. We are always busy. One of the things that we really started to try to collect is our risk assessment data, and we've done sixty-eight risk assessments on students. This means that a student comes to us, whether referred or on their own, stating that they may want to hurt themselves or others. We do a risk assessment. We send them out to either a private therapist or a hospital. So, we've done sixty-eight of them so far this year. That's about it. I think we're, we're really trying to stay on top of it as much as we can.
John, does sixty-eight seem like a high number for risk assessments on those type of, is that a typical number for our high school?
We really just started keeping steady track of it just last year. It is right around the same as last year. Out of seventeen hundred students, it's, I mean, sixty-eight is sixty-eight more than we, what we want, obviously. But one of the things that I think has changed dramatically since the tragedies that we had years ago was that students are more apt to come to us and to talk to us. Other friends who used to have a code of silence, as far as, I'm not going to tell my friend, I'm just going to try to help my friend out and not tell an adult, now they're telling on them and saying, my friend needs help. So, they're coming to us even more. And I think parents in general are more apt to also be coming to us about problems that their children are having. And I think we've done a really nice job with our faculty, or faculty are constantly calling us, saying, okay, we're concerned about this, we're concerned about this behavior, this writing. So, I, I, when you took a look at the, those graphs as, as far as sense of social-emotional security, and those have fallen more with, with school personnel, one of the things that, in talking with the, the people out in DC, they were, they were saying that more than likely, a lot of that has to do because we explained all of the different things that we're doing. They're like, you're hitting it hard, and you're hitting it home, and more than likely, staff are seeing more, you know, they're more concerned about sense of social-emotional security because more people are coming to them. So, that's the best way I can answer it. Student Assistance Program Coordinator, that's Deborah Ann Reimer.
How many social workers, psychologists?
We have three, we have three full-time social workers. We have two-point-six psychologists that are regular ed. There is also one full-time psychologist that strictly works with special education, the transition program, that kind of stuff. And then, we have Deborah Ann Reimer, who is hourly, and she's student assistance coordinator. She is now full-time.
I have a question. What, what, how many, maybe you said this, how many students in total does your department serve, you know?
Well, we, we serve the entire school.
No, I understand, but how many actually, individual students out of the seventeen hundred actually use one of your counselors or social workers at some point in the year?
Probably, on average, anywhere from three to three-fifty to four. And, and some of those are consistent. Some of those are three-times-a-week check-ins. Some of those are weekly individual sessions. Some of those are individual sessions, plus kids who are going to groups once or twice a week.
Is that, has that changed much in your time?
It has changed. We have, it used to be me and one other social worker at one point. Then I became a dean. Since then, we've, we're now up to three social workers. We used to have just a regular ed and a special ed psychologist. Now, we're, we've increased that by point two. And the students, when you go into Room One-Sixty, where all the pods of offices are, it, it's flowing on a constant. And we used to have a hard time getting groups together. Students used to not like to talk about issues in front of other students. That has dramatically changed in the past four to five years, to a point now we have all these students, student support roundtables, which have been excellent. Kids attend that all the time.
Yeah, it, it, it sounds like a good advance, like you're feeling a need that was there and maybe under the radar. Is there any way to measure whether kids are getting happier and healthier from having additional services? Or is, you know, sometimes it can fuel like a rumination, and we're all getting together and talking about how crappy life is, and is this really helping?
We can talk about individual successes. We got plenty of those. We, we have kids that, when they first came in, were, were really having a really hard time, and they're walking across the stage, you know, come this June. So, those successes are hard to measure. We know them. We see them every day. What I will say is that, as, as a group of students, our ability to accept mental health and mental health issues, and just the general problem, have improved, I think, dramatically.
One last question. Is there, is there something that came out of the survey last year that you implemented for this year that you say was your top success, or something you want to work on going forward?
Last year was the, the really first year. It was kind of like more of a baseline. We had done the CSCI before, but we had skipped years, so it was hard to kind of put together any really good measurement. One of the things that we noticed last year was that, from freshman to junior year, sophomores were kind of left behind a little bit. So, between Link Crew accepting more sophomores, just with our social work department, we've kind of focused on sophomores a little bit more, just in talking with teachers about them a little bit more. I, I, it wasn't really programmatic. It was just something that we kind of knew. And those numbers for sophomores have improved this year. So, I mean, just ever so slightly, but it's something that we're kind of aware of. I think sophomore year is kind of like this hard year, because, because we, we do such a great job with freshmen. And then, junior year, they're, they have all these opportunities curricularly, they have these opportunities as far as volunteer and everything else, and they're also busy with the ACT and everything else, that the sophomores get, get a little left behind. So, we're just constantly aware of that. We've talked about it. We're still looking at it. We're still looking to improve these programs. No problem.
I mean, there's a lot of activities up there, John, and I'll, I think I said this last year, I'll say it again. I think we have too few social workers. It's my favorite quote, "We have eight football coaches and three social workers." It should be at least reversed. I mean, what could you do? Mr. Simic says he's asked this question of teachers, so I could ask you, what would you do if money were no object, if resources, resources were no object, to reach more kids and parents? As a parent who had a sophomore that struggled a lot, you know? I mean, what could you do differently, better, harder, faster, if money and resources were no object?
We are kind of looking forward to next year's new schedule, first of all. I, I think that that's going to leave some times and opportunities open that we've never had before to address students. I, I think our three social workers work their tail off every day. Could we always use more help? Yes. Do we understand the restrictions? And we're creative, and we do what we can do to service as many students as we can. Psychologist-wise, one of the hardest things that we've run into over the past years is our outside referrals coming in, and, and those just take up an immense amount of time, because we dive into every single referral we get. So, for those of you who don't understand the process, if, if we have parents who come in with private evaluations, that they were done on their children, psychoeducational type of evaluations, they're given to us, we have ten days to respond. So, we get together, we have many meetings about them, we kind of go through our data, we go through the kids' records, we go through the reports. We have to respond back to the parents, whether or not we're going to go ahead and have a meeting, because what we're finding is substantial and makes an educational impact or not. Doing these type of things, and, and there's a whole process even beyond that, that just takes up a lot of time. So, I will say our points, two-point-six psychologists are constantly in front of their computers. So, that, that's, that's increased.
I, I, I'm not, 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 of your leadership in this area. One of the things we've discussed is some of our students, there's a stigma sometimes connected to working with a social worker or working with a school psych. And we're trying to change some of that. And some of this is getting in front of more kids and developing a push-in model where students can see our counselors, our social workers, our school psychs in the classroom and in a variety of different spaces to begin to build relationships and have a better understanding of the types of ways that they can support them. And so another way of involving more students is trying to create spaces where students are engaged and interacting with them to help tear down some of the myths and perceptions around that type of work. But I agree that we have a limited amount of social workers. And between the work of the social workers and a school psych, that's very personalized work and it's not necessarily always appropriate for those larger settings. So all hands are on deck right now based on the personnel that we have. But we have had some conversations of trying to work with the personnel that we have to make the best of it. But of course, in a situation like this, no one's ever asked me what I would like in a perfect world if money was an issue.
Hey, Shayla, what would you like in a perfect world?
I definitely think that this is a key priority in a very important area to continue to explore.
Yeah, it dawns on me, given the importance of social emotional well-being in our strategic plan, we should really be having like a social emotional report card on each child, just like academic report cards. And to do that, you need somebody paying attention to each kid and evaluating that. Is there any mechanism to do that?
We don't have the capacity right now. And that's part of this conversation. We're doing what we can and trying to be creative with, there's only so many hours in the day and so many people that we have employed to do this type of work. So.
Just wondering if the regular teachers could play a role in that, in an advisory capacity or something. I mean, they're seeing the kids every single day.
They are. And our social workers and school psychs have been awesome with providing us with round tables and different forms of professional development to bring everyone else along. But at the end of the day, that is their wheelhouse. And sometimes the more you mix that up, we want to make sure that we have experts in their area. And it's not to say that there is no overlap, but if kids need a social worker, we want them with a social worker.
We're all blessed to live here, but there's a lot of pressures that these kids feel every day. You all see it every day. I mean, without micromanaging, and I know we provide financial oversight, I mean, this is an area that I feel personally attached to and responsible for. I mean, we would, I would like to work with Dr. Holland, Mr. Maher, figure out ways to devote more resources, meaning money and time, to this area. I mean, I really think it is an area where we need to put our money where our mouth is. It is a key area of our strategic plan. And I think we.
And if you don't mind me saying one more quick thing is, you know, we have a community wellness task force and we meet three to four times a year. And it's 67 comes to it. Some of the churches, woodlands, some private agencies come to it. And through that, we develop Textitip, which has taken off. Lake County has now adopted it. McHenry County has now adopted it. Deerfield Highland Park has adopted it. I believe it's going to Orange County, California. And it was the brainchild here of our community wellness task force. And we're going to continue. And we just talked. And we're also going to try to partner with the college as far as developing some resiliency programs. Because you talk about our community and how tough it can be at times and the pressures. Now, one of the things that we've discussed is that, you know, depression is tough, but anxiety actually comes even before depression a lot of times. And developing that resiliency, the ability to maybe get through really tough things and tough times and still be able to stay positive with mental health is something that is kind of being talked about quite a bit throughout the country right now. There's a lot of programming. University of Pennsylvania is at the forefront of it. So we're really looking into those programs and what we could possibly do to bring some of those things here to our community.
No, Mr. Powers is out. I don't believe anyone's going to give a finance op. There hasn't been an ed committee meeting this month. Ted, any liaison, NSSCD reports?
Yes. First up, refinancing of the which is about $47,000, $15,000. The bond set will be refinancing as Mr. Powers said in the past. This goes directly back to the community and it represents savings to the community of almost $5 million. So that's probably the most significant thing coming out of finance. Then jumping into NSSCD, speaking again about budgets, we reviewed our draft budget at the last meeting. And right now, we're going to be proposing a budget of $48,502,000 for fiscal year '17, which reflects a 1.3% increase. And it is in balance. Additionally, we entered into a transition space on May 1st. Transition space is, it's an education life skills program for primarily 18- to 22-year-olds. And it's away from the campus, but it's near where there's public transportation and other resources. So basically, it's kind of teaches the older students how to start to live on their own. And that's all I have for the NSSCD. Except for the meeting this Wednesday, I won't be able to look down.
Thank you, Ted. Okay. Now we're going to try and move through some action items. The very first one is the bond item that Mr. Mormon just mentioned. The adoption of a parameters resolution related to the refinancing of our bonds. May I have a motion to approve the parameters resolution providing for the issue of not to exceed $27,500,000 of general obligation refunding school bonds, Series 2016, of the district for the purpose of refunding certain outstanding bonds of said school district, providing for the levy of a small, I'm sorry, for the levy of a direct annual tax sufficient to pay the principal and interest on said bonds and authorizing the sale of said bonds to the purchaser thereof? Some moved. Ellen's going to talk about it.
I'll try and quickly summarize the cover memo in your packet. And then I'm going to introduce Elizabeth Hennessy from William Blair. But the item that we're talking about is in 2006, the voters approved the issuance of $53.9 million in bonds to fund renovations at both East and West Campus. Typically, when you issue bonds, these were set out for a 20-year duration of retirement. And typically, you can't refund them or refinance them for the first 10 years. There are ways to do that, but when you do that, you eat into the savings. And a lot of times, it doesn't really make it worthwhile. We did a portion of these last fall, but we're coming up on what they refer to as the call date, meaning we're 10 years into it. And so that we can refinance the bonds without incurring negative arbitrage. Based on when we issued the bonds originally and what interest rates were in 2006 and where interest rates are now, the projected savings is actually now exceeding the $5 million. And as Liz will walk you through this, if we were to do this deal today, we're closer to $5.9 to $6 million. Mr. Mormon is absolutely correct. This doesn't increase the district's fund balance in any way because this is over the next 10 years. It will reduce the tax bills within the community by whatever amount ultimately is present when we actually execute the deal. So I'm going to introduce Elizabeth Hennessy from William Blair. Liz has been a consultant to the district longer than I've been with the district. How many years? 25?
Oh, five. No.
Oh, five.
I've been doing this.
Oh, okay. Okay. Oh, five. I came in '06. Liz is very well respected and is one of the premier people in the state that does this type of work. And so she'll walk you through kind of what we're looking at. Then the parameters resolutions really just positions us so when the market conditions are right, to go ahead and execute a deal without posting another meeting, calling you all together, or trying to convene all seven people. We've used that strategy in the past. So I'd recommend approval of that. Then the escrow resolution, I think, is really just what we're required to do. Because when we do an issuance like this, the government wants to make sure that we're using the funds for the purpose intended, which is to repay the old debt.
Thanks for having me tonight. Ellen did a great job explaining the parameters bond resolution, which authorizes the district to move forward with the refunding with no further board action. So the reason we brought this to you tonight is because the market's been great. We met with the finance committee in May, and we have been following this with the finance committee for the past two years or so. And when you refund bonds, they're not exactly like a mortgage. You can't just call them in anytime. You have a set call date. And typically, it's 10 years after the issuance of the bonds. And so for these 2006 bonds, the call date is November 1 of 2016. So you can refund those bonds before that call date. That's called an advance refunding. So we could do it right now. But the IRS has certain rules about advanced refundings. And one of those is that if you refund bonds in advance of the call date, you cannot do it again through the life of the bonds on a tax-exempt basis. However, if you wait to within 90 days of the call date, it's then considered a current refunding. And you would then have the ability to refund them again on a tax-exempt basis if you needed to for, you know, not only savings reasons, but restructuring or something like that in conjunction with another issue. So the other benefit, of course, is that waiting till within 90 days of the call date, the savings is more because we're not taking the proceeds of this $27 million bonds and just planting it in the escrow at the bank where it's invested in U.S. Treasury securities, where the yields are so low that it creates a dis-savings on the bond issue, requiring us to issue a few more bonds than we otherwise would. That's called negative arbitrage. So if you look on the sheet I just handed out, you can see the negative arbitrage in the advance refunding on the left side of the page, which is right here, is about $153,000. But if we wait till we get to the current call date, if I can do this while screwing it up. You can see that goes down to about $59 million. And the savings is higher by almost $100,000. Okay. So these, both options are really good. Of course, waiting till we get within 90 days of the call date creates some interest rate risk. We have the risk that interest rates can move. There's been lots and lots of talk about a rate increase. Most experts are now convinced there will not be a rate increase in June. And many are saying perhaps not till December, if at all, given the economic situation that we're seeing now. So by authorizing this resolution now, it gives us the flexibility, if things suddenly change and we see, you know, robust growth in the U.S. and increases in the rate, Fed funds rate by the Fed, that would affect our market, mostly on the short end, we could move quicker to lock in the savings. So the parameters resolution authorizes the board to go forth with this refunding with no further action except for the final approval of the sale of the bonds by the board president and by the assistant superintendent for finance. So nothing can be done without their approval that it in fact meets the parameters set forth in the resolution. Any questions?
Just one last comment. What's in your packet? And Liz and I talked over the weekend because it references the board president specifically, and it referenced my title. And this will likely be done after I'm gone. So we changed that. So what you'll sign tonight has Jennifer Hermes's title on it. Otherwise, it's the same document.
The type of motion. Are there any questions? May I have a motion? Some moved. A second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please, Madam Clerk. This is on the parameters resolution.
Mrs. Carling?
Aye.
Dr. Elliott?
Aye.
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Mr. Marcusson?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Next, on the escrow resolution, may I have a motion to approve the escrow resolution authorizing and directing the execution of an escrow agreement in connection with the issue of general obligation refunding school bonds by the district?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Mrs. Carling?
Aye.
Dr. Elliott?
Aye.
Mr. Marcusson?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Next item relates to construction change order authority for our East Campus construction project. Ellen, did you want to talk about that?
Sure. Whenever you do a construction project, no matter how well planned out it is, when you start opening walls, you can find things or you can run into some code issues and they require what are called change orders. So I tried to summarize how that process works. But this framework here just gives guidance to us and clarity, I think, to the board and administration about who has what levels of authority. We use this concept going back in '06. We use much higher thresholds than what we have here. I believe we use the same thresholds here when we built the track several years ago. But these are arbitrary numbers. These are what we would recommend. So basically, if something occurs, Carol White, as Director of Buildings and Grounds, would have the authority up to $15,000 to authorize a change order. If it's over 15, between 15 and 25,000, Carol would have that authority after consulting with Mike. Over 25,000, if it's an emergency, would mean that we try to get at least four of you together in a relatively short order so that we don't hit walls with the construction schedule. And if it's something that can wait to the next meeting of the board, then it would wait. This would be, and we monitor closely. So as you've seen when we talked about the budget, and we have a project budget, we do have a construction contingency in there. If we were running hot on that, then we would have further dialogue about that and more communication. But most of these are for unexpected situations or code compliance issues. And by approving this, it just helps us keep the project moving on time and smoothly.
May I have a motion to approve the board delegated change order authority?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
May I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Mrs. Carling?
Aye.
Dr. Elliott?
Aye.
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Mr. Marcusson?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you. The next item, I believe, just has to do really with the change in name of, or maybe I'm wrong. Does someone want to talk about this? The Silver Point Final Site conversion. Mrs. Whipple will?
Good evening. You're right. It really is just a change. Silver Point was purchased by Final Site. And so the new contract would be held by Final Site. It has a different content management system on the backend. So they are phasing out the backend of the old and making it new. It will look pretty much, it will look the same. There might be a few little changes, but it's really just same dollar amount, same terms. And we just need your approval to move forward with that.
May I have a motion to approve the Silver Point Final Site conversion three-year contract in the amount of $7,500 per year?
I move that the Lake Forest Community High School District 115 Board of Education approve the Silver Point slash Final Site conversion three-year contract in the amount of $7,500 per year.
Second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Mrs. Carling?
Aye.
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Dr. Elliott?
Aye.
Mr. Marcusson?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Next two items have to do with two director hires. Dr. Holland and Mr. Simic discussed this in a fair amount of detail in our closed session. The first is the approval of the Director of Teacher and Learning, a multi-year contract. May I have a motion to approve the Director of Teaching and Learning multi-year contract, please?
I move that the Lake Forest Community High School District 115 Board of Education approve the Director of Teaching and Learning multi-year contract.
A second?
Second.
A roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Carling?
Aye.
Dr. Elliott?
Aye.
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Mr. Marcusson?
Aye.
Motion passes.
I should have noted, I mean, because we discussed it in a fair amount of detail, both of these are replacements for resigning, leaving staff at the high school. So this is not additive headcount. Next, may I have a motion to approve the Director of Special Education multi-year contract?
I move that the Lake Forest Community High School District 115 Board of Education approve the Director of Special Education multi-year contract.
Second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Mrs. Carling?
Aye.
Dr. Elliott?
Aye.
Mr. Marcusson?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Next item is the approval of the Ann Whipple Consulting Contract. I believe Ann does a fantastic job. We're lucky to have her. That's my editorial comment. So may I have a motion to approve the Whipple Consulting Contract?
I move that the Lake Forest Community High School District 115 Board of Education approve the Whipple Consulting Contract.
Second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Mrs. Carling?
Aye.
Dr. Elliott?
Aye.
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Mr. Marcusson?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Next is the approval of tuition-based students attendance and transition. May I have a motion to approve the tuition-based students attendance and transition program?
I move that the Lake Forest Community High School District 115 Board of Education approve the tuition-based students attendance and transition program.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Carling?
Aye.
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Dr. Elliott?
Aye.
Mr. Marcusson?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Next item is the East Campus Roofing Bid. I'm going to ask for a motion to move this to the June meeting so the Finance and Operations Committee has a chance to review this in a little bit more detail. So may I have a motion to move the approval of the East Campus Roofing Bid? Did I do that right?
Yes. I move that the Lake Forest Community High School District Board 115 defer this item until the June board meeting.
Thank you. Correct word, defer. Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Carling?
Aye.
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Dr. Elliott?
Aye.
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Mr. Marcusson?
Aye.
Motion passes.
We've had a couple, the next item related to the private tutoring policy, we've had a couple of questions come up since the packet came out. So I would also ask for a motion to defer review and approval of this policy to next month. So may I have a motion to defer the approval of the first reading of the private tutoring policy?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Dr. Elliott?
Aye.
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Mrs. Carling?
Aye.
Mr. Marcusson?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Next few items relate to some policy, board policy changes. Some of them brought on by just being in compliance with laws and regs, others having to do with some cl- on by just being in compliance with laws and regs, others having to do with some clarification of practice. First item is the approval of Policy 2:150, Committee's first reading. May I have a motion to approve the first reading of Policy 2:150?
I move the Lake Forest Community High School District 115 Board of Education approve first reading of Policy 2:150, Committees.
Second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Dr. Elliott?
Aye.
Mrs. Carling?
Aye.
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Mr. Marcusson?
Aye.
Motion passes.
I should, I mean, any of the committee members that are not on the policy and planning committee that want to discuss any of these, stop me after we make the motion, and we could open it up for discussion. So next, the approval of Policy 4:170, Safety First, Safety First Reading. May I have a motion to approve the first reading of Policy 4:170 on Safety?
I move that the Lake Forest Community High School District 115 Board of Education approve the first reading of Policy 4:170, Safety.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Carling?
Aye.
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Dr. Elliott?
Aye.
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Mr. Marcusson?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Next item has to do with the clarification of policy to match practice. May I have a motion to approve the first reading of Policy 5:330, Educational Support Personnel, Sick Days, Vacations, Holidays, and Leaves?
I move that the Lake Forest Community High School District 115 Board of Education approve the first reading of Policy 5:330, Educational Support Personnel, Sick Days, Vacations, Holidays, and Leaves.
Can I say this when I say something? Okay. So I just wanted to thank Brittany and Allison for a lot of hard work. There were some outdated guidelines in the employee handbooks, and we talked about it at length. And I think we arrived at a really good plan, and I really appreciated how they were open-minded, and we were able to dialogue, I think, quite well, and landed a very good update, a necessary update to our policies. So with that, I would second the motion.
Thank you. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Dr. Elliott?
Aye.
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Mrs. Carling?
Aye.
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Mr. Marcusson?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Last, approval of Press Issue 91, first reading. May I have a motion to approve the first reading of Press Issue 91?
I move that the Lake Forest Community High School District 115 Board of Education approve the first reading of Press Issue 91.
Second?
Second.
A third?
Fifth.
Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Carling?
Aye.
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Dr. Elliott?
Aye.
Mr. Marcusson?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Human Resources Reports are going to begin to get more voluminous as we move through the summer and into the new school year, so if there's any comments, questions, discussion that anyone would like to have on the HR report this month, may I have a motion to approve the Human Resources Report as presented?
I move that the Lake Forest Community High School District 115 Board of Education approve the Human Resources Report as presented.
Second? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Mrs. Carling?
Aye.
Dr. Elliott?
Aye.
Mr. Marcusson?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you. I'm now going to read through the consent agenda, and I'd like to remind the board that any one of these items can be removed and discussed at the request of any board member. So may I have, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda items, including the approval of disbursements, payrolls, and financial statements for April 2016, approval of the designation of depositories, the appointment of treasurer, the acknowledgement of the Kupersky gift of glass, glass tools, and shelving, the minutes of a regular meeting dated April 11, 2016, the minutes of an executive session dated April 11, 2016, the minutes of an executive session dated April 27, 2016, the disposal of audio recordings dated October 14, 2014. So may I have a motion, please?
I move that the Lake Forest Community High School District 115 Board of Education approve the consent agenda items as presented.
Second?
Second.
All in, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Dr. Elliott?
Aye.
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Mrs. Carling?
Aye.
Mr. Marcusson?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you. We have FOIA requests from Jared Pippenbrink, it's commercial, and Doug Jones, a non-resident. As we get to the end of the school year, went by fast. I mean, we have a lot of announcements, a lot of activities coming up. Tuesday, May 10, we've already talked about this, is a parent-community meeting about the school day, 6:00 p.m. on the west campus, right here in this building in Seminar B,